Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to welcome you to Monday, March the 18th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And at this time, I'd like to ask George Laurie with the Jewish community of the Outer Banks to come forward with an invocation. Welcome, George.
Welcome. Thank you. Again, I'm part of the North Air Ministers Association. And I know at every meeting, we appreciate the fact that you seem to appreciate that you allow folks in the group to come twice a month and open the meetings with a prayer. This is my fifth time, and it's a privilege. I appreciate that. I want to thank God, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, anyone else in Dare County, for finally completing that beautiful bridge to Hatteras Island, no matter what its name might be. I then want to start by thanking God for giving us normal winter, while many others in this great nation of ours suffered through blizzards, extreme cold, ice, tornadoes, and now floods. I hope that those communities are able to unite to help each other in the same way people on the Outer Banks help one another at all times. I know I won't mention all of them, but we need to recognize and support our many food banks, smaller groups like Room in the Inn and Ruthie's Kitchen, school support groups like Food for Thought, special places like the Community Care Clinic at Dare County, larger organizations like Interfaith Community Outreach, Outer Banks Relief Foundation, Outer Banks Community Foundation. The support all these and other groups received from our locals, our town governments, and you, our Dare County Commissioners, can only be described by a Jewish person such as I as a mitzvah, a truly good deed, a blessing. It is. You folks out here are just spectacular. And while there appears to be no end in sight for the daily ranker that is evident at the national level, and only slightly less at the state level, I continue to believe that this is a situation that should hardly ever manifest itself in the Outer Banks, other than southern shores. Frankly, it cannot. We are better than that. No matter how passionate any issue can become, we must remember to be civil to one another at all times, show no malice, be considerate of all opinions, and exhibit a level of grace and decency in our speech, in our actions, and in our postal distributions. If you show respect to your fellow human beings, they'll show respect to you, and you'll gain their support. Such thoughts are championed by God. So let us pray. Holy One of blessing, we thank you and sing your praises for our lives which are in your hand, for our souls which are in your keeping. You are goodness, you are compassion, you have always been our hope. Soften our hearts and open our minds. Grace us with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter in our resolve. King of the universe, you have sanctified us with your commandments and commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. Be with these commissioners and others who serve Dare County on a daily basis. Guide them and all our citizens to realize that we are all equal in the eyes of this almighty God. May this be God's will, and let us say amen.
Amen.
All right. Thank you. Blessed day, blessed 2019.
May we stand for the pledge. The pledge of allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We have two of our commissioners not with us this evening. Vice Chairman Overman is out of town. He serves on the Airport Committee, and he's at some meetings with respects to Manio Airport and dealing with some issues with that. We also have absent this evening Commissioner Bateman is out of the state as well on some personal business. Both have excused absences. So with that being said, I will turn the meeting over to our county manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Item one on your agenda is the Chairman's Update.
Thank you. Few items just to go over this evening with you. First is our board had a very, very productive board retreat on Wednesday, March the 6th, that we went over with the county manager, county finance director, and our public information officer. And we had a very, very productive meeting, getting ready for our discussing issues facing us for the 2019 year, and gave staff some direction as to what we are looking forward to with respects to a budget for the coming year. So I want to thank the commissioners for that. It was a very, very productive meeting. Friday, March the 8th, the Outer Banks Chamber once again hosted a luncheon and recognized some outstanding women of the Outer Banks. It's a fun event. Always cost me money when I go, but I have a lot of fun. I have a sweet tooth, and they have an auction with cakes. And I tend to go overboard when it comes to buying those things. But they're good. I just want to recognize Sandy Kinzel was recognized as one of the honorees. She's Assistant Superintendent of Dare County Schools. Brandy Rubottom, who certainly works here in the county for Dare County Older Adult Services. Monica Thibodeau was another honoree. She's the Mayor Pro Tem of Duck. Beth Midget Realty, representing Midget Realty and Bridges for Mums, and much, much more. And then finally Jenny Turner, who is a planner in the Currituck County. All five of those women were recognized as honorees at that luncheon, and very well deserved on each one of them. I know them personally, and they work very, very hard for our community. I also had the privilege annually of attending Friday, that same evening, the same day, March the 8th, the annual Kill Devil Hills Fire Department Awards Dinner. And it's just amazing. I am a former auxiliary member of KDH, and I remember they gave out some 20-year pins and 25-year pins. It's just hard to believe that I was in that group for a number of years. And you see hiring those young guys, and now they got 20 and 25 years of service with the fire department. They do fantastic work, just good people, and it's always fun to attend that event. Had the opportunity to go down, March the 11th, Monday, the 11th, and talk with some folks once again in Avon concerning the issues in Avon with beach erosion. I did tour the area down there for a couple of miles, and I'm quite impressed, Danny, of what they've been able to do to build their dunes back. Every one of them have done that at a substantial personal cost to them. And that dune is about a 15-foot dune down there now, but they certainly don't have any backyard, so to speak. It's right there on the ocean. We've just got to keep our fingers crossed that we will have a kind season ahead of us. I know that the county did spend about $39,000 for sand fencing, that most of them certainly took advantage of that. So it looked really, really good compared to what it's been in recent months. And I'm hopeful that we'll have a very kind season this year. We continue to talk about that as a board, and we know we have some challenges there. On Tuesday, the next day, March the 12th, I attended the Board of Education meeting at First Flight Elementary, and I believe I've passed on to each of you, board members, a copy of their 2019, excuse me, 2019 to 20 through 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. And hopefully each of you received that and have a copy of it. If not, I certainly have standby copies for you. They've got some good stuff planned for their capital improvement projects between then and 2024. And then last, but certainly not least, I'm not sure how many of you may know Al Friedman, but Al is a broker with Sun Realty, and I've spoken with him recently. And he is going to have the first annual Dare County Educator and First Responder Appreciation Dinner. And it's going to be held at Captain George's in Kill Devil Hills on Thursday, May the 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And Dorothy, I'll give you a copy of that flyer if you can post that for us. It'll be a buffet dinner and door prizes and guest speaker. And he says, really get your order in early because it's going to be limited seating. So he would like an RSVP by May the 13th. So I'll make sure you get a copy of that flyer. And so if you're able to attend, I'll make sure you get a copy of that. So county manager, that's all I have under Chairman's comment.
Chairman, that leads us to item two on the agenda. That's public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this evening, please raise your hand if you haven't signed up. When you do, I'll recognize you. Please come to the podium, limit your comments to five minutes. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, I have Karen Brown and Pat Brew, the Outer Banks Chamber.
Karen, Pat, welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, for having us here this evening. Chairman Woodard has given you an update on our Women's Appreciation Luncheon last week. What he didn't tell you is there were actually six awardees, but one of them was not able to be there at our luncheon. So we are here today to award our six awardee. As Planning Director for Dare County, Donna Creef has worked with the requests by the Outer Banks Chamber this past year to look at zoning changes to help facilitate more housing units for our year-round and seasonal workforce. Donna's professionalism and open-mindedness to reviewing and making recommendations to the planning board, and ultimately this board, has resulted in changes that can hopefully be the first steps to alleviating the housing crisis for year-round and seasonal workers that currently exists. As an organization, we appreciate Donna's efforts and look forward to continuing to work with her and the entire Dare County team as we continue to look at ways to address the housing situation. Thank you, Donna, for all you do for Dare County and the entire Outer Banks region.
(applause) Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bobby sent me a note this morning, reminded me to come to the meeting, and I thought, well, I know I'm coming off vacation, but...
Donna, I was in Donna's office a couple of weeks ago, and I specifically asked her, I said, "Do you have anything to do on March the, what was it, the 11th?"
The 8th.
I said, "Do you have anything to do?" I said, "We need to talk about a little bit more. You and I need to talk a little bit more about housing, and I'd like to go to lunch with you, take you to lunch and talk about it." She said, "Well, you're going to have to wait because I'm on vacation." So Donna, that's why I was asking you that day to go to lunch with me.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Is there other public comment this evening? Seeing here, is there any public comment in Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we close public comment and move on to item three. And we have Dave Peterson here from Trillium Health Resources to give the annual report.
Dave, welcome this evening.
Thank you, Chairman. I really appreciate you all giving me some time. This is my fourth year doing this annual report with you all, and we do these in every one of our counties. And so I want to first thank Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Ross. Both of them have been serving on our Regional Advisory Board, and we really appreciate their input towards our board and the activities that Trillium Health Resources has been doing. And so I also just want to briefly mention, recognize Keith Letchworth, who is our System of Care Coordinator in Dare County. And so he's here with me tonight. And I'll have time for questions at the end if anybody has any. So just briefly, I'm going to be hitting on a couple of things, but our mission is transforming lives of people in need by providing ready access to quality care. And we're going to go over some coverage changes, some legislative changes, and actually, Commissioner Overman knows a little bit even more about those because he's serving on one of the committees to address that. We're talking about some funding changes, organizational changes, and then at the end we'll give you some individual Dare County data. So just briefly, if folks don't remember, we're a managed care organization that oversees the three disability groups, mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. We are not a service provider. We manage 500 agencies that do that throughout our 26 counties. We have a total population of about 1.4 million. We have about 205,000 Medicaid-eligible individuals. And in that, each year, we serve about 54,000 people. Okay? Like I said, 500,000 providers. Our total budget, which includes both federal Medicaid, state dollars, and county dollars, is a little over $355 million. We have, in our catchment area, the 26 counties, and I'm over the central region, Terrell County is our smallest county, and as you know, it's the smallest county in the state. But we also have New Hanover County, which is the eighth-largest county in the state. We cover, Trillium Health Resources covers over 12,000 square miles.
Dave, how many counties are in our central? Ah, here we come. Nine.
Yes. So here's our map. And what's interesting about the map, we have a northern region of 10 counties. Those are the lighter color green, but total population of those 10 counties is only 200,000 people. Then we have the central region, which includes Nash County, okay? Is not contiguous to us, but we come all the way out to Dare County in the central region. All right? And the central region, which has one county less than the northern region, has almost 500,000 people in those nine counties. All right? But even more interesting is our southern county, which, southern region, which only has seven counties, and obviously because it's New Hanover down there, their total population is 715,000 people in the southern region. All right? So our way of trying to make sure that there's equity amongst our 26 counties is we have to do things differently in New Hanover County than we do in Terrell County. All right? So we try to make sure that we're, and I'll give one example, in Terrell County and in Dare County, we have a kiosk, a mental health screening kiosk, that sits in those counties because access to care through a kiosk is one way of getting people in to calling us if they need help. And we actually have a phone right on that kiosk that goes right into our call center. So let me talk a little bit about a coverage change. If you all remember, two years ago, Nash County decided to disengage from their managed care organization and come over to Trillium. So we went from 24 counties to 25. Well, this past year, Columbus County decided to do the same thing. So they joined us this last July 1st, and so we are now 26 counties. So my counterpart in the southern region, the Southern Regional Director, David Tartt, he got an additional county this past year, and that's Columbus County. We are trying to make sure that our big providers, and you all know Port very well, Port is setting up an office down in Columbus County also, just to make sure that they're addressing the mental health and substance abuse needs down there. We also have Integrated Family Services that's in all 26 counties, and they do a lot of the mobile crisis and outpatient services. And we've done a variety of requests for proposals to help build that network down there, and that's one of the reasons why they moved from one MCO over to us, to make sure services were available for individuals in Columbus County. So this is the slide, the next two slides are very, very big changes that are happening to us. The state, a couple of years ago, had decided to go for another waiver. We are on a waiver called the 1915 B.C., but they're moving to an 1115 waiver, which means overall, right now, we serve individuals on those three disability groups, mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use. But this waiver is going to ask us to serve the whole person. And I'll get into a little bit of that. Yes, Commissioner?
Let me just comment to these guys. This is a change of incredible proportion. And Wally and I have frankly put in quite a few hours, both on webinar broadcasts, as well as talking to Dave and staff, to try to understand and comprehend the sweeping change to North Carolina health care as a result of this.
Yes.
So Dave is much better and more familiar than I. I just wanted to call out so to emphasize what massive changes are about to take place.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. And I've been doing this 36 years. I've been working in this industry, and this is the biggest one I've ever seen. We've made a lot of changes over the years, but it is big. So what the state is actually trying to do, you'll see the terms standard plan and tailored plan. Right now, for Medicaid, we manage their mental health services, whether it's a low-cost, low-risk service, just like if an individual needs some medication, or if an individual needs some just basic, once-a-month outpatient therapy. We manage that right now. All right? What the state is doing is moving those low-cost, low-risk individuals over into private insurance companies. And most of the private insurance, well, no private insurance company in North Carolina has managed Medicaid before. Okay? They're going to be managing...
Big change, number one.
Yes. Okay? So there was an application, eight applications came in, so as a request for proposal. Blue Cross Blue Shield did get awarded. United Health got awarded. WellCare got awarded, and Caritas/AmeraHealth got awarded. Two very large insurance companies didn't get awarded. Aetna, and everybody has heard that, huge national organization, they did not get awarded. And Optima, another national company that did not get awarded. And there was two other applications called provider-led entities, and one of them got it, and it's called Carolina Complete Health, and that is an agency that's under the North Carolina Medical Society. All right? But another agency that didn't get awarded was an agency that is run under the old name called the North Carolina Hospital Association, and UNC, and there's a lot of very large hospitals that were part of that, and they were not awarded. To my understanding, there's a couple of appeals that have already started because some agencies didn't get awarded this. All right? We have heard that that will not slow down the timeframe, and I'll get into the timeframe. They are going to be managing about 70% of the individuals we now manage. Okay? In the tailored plan, the next piece on there, is what we're going to continue to manage, the very high-risk individuals. The ones that need a lot of, so the population that needs 24/7, the population that has a lot of hospitalizations, the one that needs a lot of high-end substance abuse services, are the ones that we're going to continue to manage. We manage them now. We know how to answer calls at 3:00 in the morning, and that's what we do. Okay? This all has to be budget-neutral. Like I said, it puts the mild-to-moderate individuals into the standard plan, and the innovations individuals, and innovations is a waiver of people with developmental disabilities, and developmental disabilities, those are individuals that are born with that intellectual and developmental disabilities till death. We will continue to be managing those individuals. Yes?
And managing those individuals more broadly to physical health, as well as substance abuse and mental health, which is something we have never done before.
Yes.
Big change, number two.
Yes. So another good point, we don't currently manage them, but unfortunately, I've been around long enough doing this 36 years, and there was two class-action lawsuits back in the 80s and 90s, and we did manage the whole person then with those class-action lawsuits. But in the late 90s, they pushed that out to insurance companies or to the state managing those. And so we only manage the state dollars. So on this next slide, the timeframe. So in February, those insurance companies I just named, the state awarded those. And then in July, all those insurance companies are going to have to have call centers like we do. We have a call center 24/7 with licensed clinicians in there. What has been really interesting is the state has put out a map, and there's a map of how they're going to be, those large insurance companies are going to be statewide, but there's also that smaller one that I mentioned that was a provider-led entity. They're going to be in regions. And so one of the things that was asked of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the secretary said, "From each of the managed care organization, we need one representative to develop the map for us in the tailored plan." They have a standard plan map already out there, and now they're going to be developing a tailored plan map. We cover 26 counties, and the standard plan map doesn't include all 26 of our counties. So one of the things was, they asked the MCO to have one representative to sit on this committee, and we are very fortunate to have Commissioner Overman represent Trillium. Of all 26 of our counties, he's going to be our voice to develop the map. All right? So I know our CEO had a long meeting with him last Monday to do talking points and that sort of thing, but that being said, Commissioner Overman is going to be representing us on the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Committee that's going to develop the map for us managed care organizations. We're very comfortable for him representing us very well. This is going to start in two phases. Basically, they're going to be starting marketing of those four private insurance companies and that one provider-led entity. They're going to start marketing their private insurance for Medicaid for individuals to see what plans they want to choose from. All right? And then in November, one of the phases will come out. The Piedmont and the Triangle area are going to be the first two regions to go live in the standard plan, not us, the standard plan. All right? And then in February 2020, we, the state is going to be putting out a request for proposal for the tailored plan. for the tailored plan. And I will say, since we are the best MCO out there, we don't have any fears of not getting the RFP. But that being said, the state can choose, in legislation it says, five to seven managed care organizations. There are seven of us right now, all right? So we could go down, we could stay at seven, we could go down to six managed care organizations, or we could go down to five. We can't go any lower because of what the legislation says, all right? So that being said, if we stay the same, hopefully with the, the map drawing, we keep our 26 counties, all right? If we go down to six, does that mean there will be additional counties being added to us? Maybe, okay? So in May of 2020, they'll be awarding the tailored plan out to the managed care organizations. We have then a readiness review in February 2021, and then in July, we implement the tailored plan. And that is when, remember I said 70% of those individuals are gonna be, being managed by the private insurance companies? We will then only be managing 30% of the high-risk individuals at that point, okay? This then addresses the funding changes, okay? Since they will be, the insurance companies will be addressing the lower-risk individuals, they are lower cost also. Right now in Medicaid, we get paid on a per-member-per-month, all right? But if, right now, we manage both the high-risk and the low-risk individuals, and so that per-member-per-month is fairly low. What will happen is, if we're only gonna be managing the high-risk, high-cost individuals, our per-member-per-month is gonna go way up, okay? For two reasons. They cost more, and we're gonna be treating the whole person, all right? We're gonna be making sure that we have contracts with pharmacies. We're gonna be making sure that we have contracts with primary care docs, okay? So we are gonna be managing the whole person. And so that being said, we are trying to adjust our infrastructure internally in order to make sure that we have the staff and the knowledge, skills, and experience for the primary care side of the house.
Once again, big change, number three. 70% of our client base is being moved out, and we are left with 30% of the highest care, highest-demand patients. The impact on our funding, staffing, resources, all unknown at this point.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. So that gets us to this next slide, and I did not prompt him to ask, say these things either, but that being said, we are having to take a really close look at all the social determinants of health. Health departments have been doing that for a long time, all right? But we are now starting to focus on that whole person and addressing any food disparities, housing, transportation, education, and jobs. Those are the five social determinants of health that are nationally recognized. And so we have staff that are, are starting to look into how we can better manage the whole individual in each of those communities. And like I said, in New Hanover County, it's gonna be a totally different way to manage food disparities than it is going to be in the smaller counties, all right? So we wanna make sure we're addressing the individual community needs. We're gonna be working much closer, and we, we work closely now with the Department of Social Services and the Health Departments, but we're gonna be having to make even a closer relationship if we're treating the whole person, okay? We are also needing to hire a psychiatrist to help with our utilization management that has a broad scope of the whole person, all right? Let's make sure folks are aware, we are a closed network for the mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse providers, but we will not be a closed network to the physical health. Anybody that's currently serving Medicaid individuals right now for the physical side of the house, they're gonna, it's an open network, okay? So we're not gonna be able to say, no, you can't come in, all right? So people currently getting services from those providers will be able to continue to do that. This is an update on the opioid funding. So last year, there were, or the past two years, and it's ending in April, there was a national grant from, from the feds in regards, it's called Cures Money, and we spent a little over $3 million in Cures dollars for folks that had a primary diagnosis of opioid abuse. They could have other diagnoses, but they had to have the primary of opioid abuse. We served 1,880 people with that, that money. Many counties develop opioid coalitions. Before this Cures Act was around, you all had your substance abuse task force or saving lives task force that's addressing a lot of this already, and it's a great committee, and I sit on that one with Roxanna and Commissioner Overman. So there's a lot of other counties that have started to develop those types of task force similar to what you all have here. I am not gonna go in a lot of detail about the hurricane update because I, we are going to be trying to have a presentation in all of the potential counties that were impacted by the hurricane, but I do wanna say that we got a lot of support from two other, three other managed care organizations similar to ours in the state while this happened. We had over 4,000 care packages delivered to shelters, comfort kits were delivered to us, and then we distributed them to children that have disabilities. We stocked pantries for our transition to community living members, that's the TCLI acronym in there. Cardinal Innovations, the other managed care organization on the western part of the state, they put together over 1,000 backpacks for us to deliver to schools in those counties. We did get a federal FEMA grant, and that one is really helping individuals get reconnected to any housing or supports that they need. But we do have a prediction of the impact on the mental health services. 2% to 4% increase of adults needing mental health services, about 50% to 60% increase of children under 13 that were impacted by this, and about 35% to 45% increase in services for kids 13 to 18, which we're gonna have to be dealing with in the next three to five years. It was interesting, one of the FEMA, National FEMA reps was in New Bern about two months after, and he said, if any of you think New Bern's gonna be back to normal within the year, don't kid yourself, it's gonna take three to five years for New Bern to get back to normal. And those cities that got hit really hard know that very well. So lastly, the Dare County numbers. Each year, I give you the total numbers of folks that were served for their mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use. Total number in Dare County was 1,172 individuals. Those with a primary diagnosis of mental health were 842. Those with a primary diagnosis of substance use was 324, and those with an intellectual or developmental disability were 127. And as you see the note at the bottom, some of those individuals have dual diagnosis and receive services from different disability groups, so. And that is my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them at this time.
Well, thank you, Dave. Anyone have any questions today?
I do.
Jim?
I actually have two questions. My first one was, what was the genesis of all this, and where did this come from?
You mean the transition back to the, yeah. So, and this is gonna age me, there used to be 41 of us, okay? And now there's seven. And that started in 2001. And they have been slowly trying to grow the size of us for a fiscal reason, so that the more people that we manage, the less administrative overhead, okay? I think that was the intent of that. But I remember in the late 90s, there was 41 area programs, is what we used to be called, and then they changed us to local management entities. And in that being said, then we didn't do the services ourselves anymore, we contracted those out, and that was that 500 agencies that we currently do. And so I think that was the initial intent.
Okay, my, my second question, I know the 70/30 split, the 70 split are people with less demand of service, 30% is more. Is there any breakdown in how that 355 million of your budget gets split up, or is that, is that one of the hanging chads, so to speak?
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that I did mention was that per-member-per-month, okay? That's gonna defy, define how much we're gonna be getting in, in order to, and so I don't think it's gonna be a $355 million split, 70/30. It's going to be, well, I know it's not gonna be that, because they're gonna be not needing as much of their per-member-per-month as we are. And so there, we are advocating, obviously, to make sure that we have enough money to, to address the high-needs, high-risk individuals within our system.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Dave, can you go back to his first question a little bit on, two years ago, this is, two years ago, everything was fine. Why are we doing this? I mean, it's fine. Why, why are we making all these tremendous changes?
So the, one of the things, one of the differences in the two waivers, I mentioned the 1915 B.C. waiver, which truly only allows us to do these Medicaid service definitions, all right? With the 1115 waiver, it's going to be able to allow us to do more of a broader look at an individual. So we're not gonna be tied necessarily to only the Medicaid service definitions. But that being said, it still splits the system so that, you know, we aren't gonna be managing the, the lower-end individuals. And, and going back, yeah, yeah. You ask why, that, that was up to the state.
Between the lines, we had a change of management, a change of management at the State Department of Health and Human Services, and from what I've been able to glean, that the new folks there determined a philosophy of managing and administering mental health as well as physical health services needed to change. Am I far off, or am I recent?
Yeah, and treating the whole person.
And treating the whole person.
Yes.
Philosophically, as opposed to allowing an open system of medical care doctors and hospitals to treat physical ailments, while we have our closed system in Dare County with Port Health Services administered through Trillium for all intellectual development, disability, substance abuse, and mental health, and that's being blown up.
So I will, I will say this one thing, one of the things, and I'll use Port as an example, and talking to their CEO, they already have contracts with most of those large insurance companies, because they also do individuals with private insurance, okay? So, but it's going to be an impact on some of our smaller to medium-sized companies that don't have that. And that's, that's the, that's gonna be a big impact on them. That's gonna be a big impact.
All right, anyone else? Well, Dave, thank you so much for being here this evening and giving us that report. Keith, thank you for being here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Chairman, item four on the agenda will be had by Dave Clausen.
I mean, everything was good. All right, it's fine. He wouldn't come out. No. He was telling everyone what he felt.
Good day.
This year's budget, you had $2,574,250 of vehicles to be acquired and financed. Not all of them, but the major ones were three for facilities maintenance, 12 for sheriff, three ambulances, two more for EMS, or two other vehicles for EMS, and eight for Health and Human Services, and two trash trucks. We took proposals for that financing and actually got seven, which is a lot. The low bidder was Bank of America. We haven't had a bid from B of A since 1999. I don't think it's anything we've done, it's just capacity from what somebody's told me. But we've included the bid tabulation, all documents, documents are fine, I've been through them all. We're asking you to adopt the resolution, which is the very first two pages, to award a three-year financing to Bank of America Public Capital Corp. at 2.521%, authorize the manager and staff to execute all the documents.
Thank you, David. Pleasure to the board.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, item five on the agenda is a memorandum of agreement with AOC, which is the Administrative Office of the Courts. As you all know, in our budget, we had money set aside to fight the opioid problems, and we allowed the substance abuse or the saving lives task force to meet with a group that included that group, as well as people in the judicial system. And what they decided to do to move forward to try to combat that was to create a recovery court. And so what has happened is, we've worked, we were gonna use some of the money to hire the person, we worked with AOC, they have to be an employee of AOC, so we said, fine, we'll, we'll cover the cost out of the money we budgeted, can be the AOC's employee, reports to the Superior Court Judge, find him a space in the courthouse, and we'll move forward. This agreement is the agreement between us and AOC. To accomplish that, you'll note that it, it, there's a little over $20,000 for this fiscal year, because that runs through July. But for that, but for the fact that it goes into the next fiscal year, I would've just signed this and moved on, but it does say that we're agreeing that we're gonna pay for this for the next 20 months, which goes into another fiscal year, and I didn't wanna be signing a contract for funds that you haven't budgeted yet. So if we go forward with our budget and carry over the funding that we had last year, we'll have more than enough funds to pay for this in the next budget. It's about an 80-some thousand dollar cost with all the benefits and everything for the addition. And so if you approve this tonight, then you're basically saying in the next budget, we're gonna make sure we accommodate this expense as well.
Okay, any questions, Abami?
No.
That being said, is there, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
It's a motion by Commissioner Ross to, to approve the MOA and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement.
Yes, sir.
It's been seconded by Commissioner House and Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, item six on the agenda is two public hearings. The first of the public hearings is with regard to Chapter 152 and Planning of Development, and that's to change our ordinances to allow the board to appoint the chair of the planning board. Is there anyone here tonight that'd like to speak to that ordinance change? Is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak to that ordinance change?
No comment from Buxton.
Aye. Hearing, none, then public hearing will be closed, and what's the pleasure of the board?
All right. Pleasure of the board?
A move to approve the changes.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the proposed revisions, no, excuse me. Let's get, let's back up a minute. Yeah, that's right, I got it right. Revisions Chapter 152 of Dare County Code. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion?
Right, of course.
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimously.
And the second public hearing is to approve the supplement to the Dare County Code ordinances. This is to codify changes that you've made during the year. You've already approved them, but this gets them all in one place and codified at one time. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to that issue? Is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
With no comment, Mr. Chairman, I close the public hearing and ask the board what's the pleasure.
Closure to board?
Approve the resolution.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the resolution for the update of the Dare County Code of Ordinances.
Second.
It's seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? I was hoping we'd hear from the honoree, but she's been quiet. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Donna, that was the easy one.
Donna, you can go home now.
You can go home now.
Once again, congratulations.
Yes. Much appreciated.
Best of the best.
Chairman, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have approval of the minutes from March 4th and the retreat on March 6th. You have a DHHS budget amendment. You have a Health and Human Services contract with Network Solutions for email encryption. You have the Public Health Division contract for pharmacy solutions. You have the town of Naxhead request to delegate approval for power techniques permits. You have the Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department contract agreement and update. You have a records retention and disposal schedule update, a contract for prescribed fuel reduction burn, and the tax collector's report.
Is there a motion to approve?
Approved.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner House and Couch, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item eight, and that's Commissioner's business. And Commissioner Tobin, you mind kicking that off?
Sure. I don't have a whole lot, I'd just like to say a little bit about the dredge project and where we're at. We did meet with the state about the funding of it and when the funds would be dispersed, and the issues that we had with the contract that they had given us. The contract was kind of an off, off-the-shelf contract for a grant, which this is not a grant. So we had a good meeting with them, resolved all of our differences, and we've been assured by them that within the next week to 10 days, something in that timeframe, that we should get the new contract back from them. Also, we met with their attorneys, not the state's attorneys, EJ's attorneys, and we've gotten very, very, very close to having everything resolved and all of our differences. So things are moving ahead in a really good direction.
That's great. What, what happens once y'all get all those agreements done, Jim?
Once the agreements are done, it goes back to the task force and comes back to us here. And then once that's done, goes to the state. Then, once that's done, then we select, well, the selection's already been done of who the engineer, the marine architect will be. But we'll move forward with hiring them, EJ will.
Great. Good deal.
It's getting close.
Thank you. That's super. Good stuff. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. Very excited about the upcoming legislative fish fry dinner in Raleigh on April 9th. That is always a high point for all legislators to share some delicious North Carolina seafood, and I look forward to attending that. Steve will be there.
I will be there all day long. I might be there, not sure yet.
Maybe. Commissioner Bateman will be there, I'll be there, so we'll have a good showing. The animal shelter is progressing. We had an update meeting on Friday of last week, I believe it was, I'm looking at County Manager Outen and, and Finance Director Clawson. We, we met with the architect, representatives of the shelter, the SPCA, and ourselves. And I think we ironed out a few rough edges, but it's now going to be progressing well after the programmatic design phase is essentially at completion, and we will be finalizing concept designs in the coming weeks, prior to then going forward with issuance of, of a construction bid. I'm looking for a nod of assent there from Mr. Clawson.
RF, RFQ for construction.
Yeah, RFQ.
Yes, an RFQ. And I'm pleased to announce that some weeks back, I asked you all and you unanimously approved a new resolution to the bylaws of the Albemarle Commission, which essentially made it in sync with the original charter, and all 10 counties have now approved that. So, yeah, I know. So the new bylaws are indeed, the law of the land at Albemarle Commission, which is very good, puts us on a consistent footing with the charter. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Ross.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, just to avoid some emails and some clarity, for the, we talked a little bit, Commissioner Ross talked about the, the animal shelter and getting closer on those plans. One thing that, that did not include was the site plan, and we had promised some of those that are the dog park users an opportunity to look at the site plan once we got that far. And so, once we get what Commissioner Ross is talking about and we get the engineers to put it on the ground, then we can, we'll be in a position to share that with whoever would like to see it.
Good, thank you. Appreciate you keeping that in mind. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Been kind of a busy couple of weeks, as anybody who's kinda looked at the news can understand. But first part of it, on March 8th, I attended a planning meeting with Jane Harris and a North Carolina Sea Grant about a North Carolina oyster trail for the northern coast. This is a proposition that came from UNC Kenan Flagler School of Business and North Carolina Policy Collaboratory and the North Carolina Sea Grant. The oyster trail will focus on reaching residents and visitors in places they already live and travel. It'll put these residents and visitors towards oyster-related businesses and activities. It will also focus on increasing economic activity through increased direct tourism, spending while educating the public on our local aquaculture, much like the Virginia Oyster Trail, and also the models of the Napa Valley Trails, not for oysters, but for wine in Napa Valley, believe it or not. The northern region of North Carolina was selected to be a pilot program, and we also have plans on having a North Carolina Oyster Festival to go along with the trail. And the trail will be available throughout the main tourist season, so it's not just a one-week thing, it's, it'll be available throughout the whole, whole season itself. And this is just in the, in the, this was a preliminary planning stage, and it'll go a lot longer just in the planning stages until we actually get something in concrete and actually something going. We're working on what criteria businesses will have to be required to, to be on the oyster trail, and things of that nature, it's just small details we need to work out. On March 13th, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission held an emergency meeting and passed a proclamation to ban gill net fishing in the Pamlico and Neuse rivers for rockfish, which goes into effect today and has a two-year moratorium. Now, you might be asking, why does that affect us in Dare County? It looks, you have to look at what the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission has, has done. And to kind of explain it, give, give a little bit more background, if they can do it there, they can do it in other, other areas of North Carolina waters. A resolution for this ban was voted and sent to the Director of Marine Fisheries in their February meeting, and Director Murphy cited he was against the ban due to insufficient science to support it. The North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission called an emergency meeting, giving barely the required 48-hour notice. It was voted five to four to pass a resolution forcing the director to put the ban out in pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 233-221-1. I will add a little bit to that as well. Their emergency meeting, I talked to two of the members on the commission, and they found out about the meeting by press release. They were not even notified of the meeting by the commission itself. As you can well imagine, this has kind of raised a few eyes of concern. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Secretary Michael S. Regan issued the following statement. "I am disappointed by the Marine Fisheries Commission calling an emergency meeting with only 48 hours' notice of a non-emergency. The commission used bad judgment in directing the Division of Marine Fisheries Director to take action that contradicted science and the recommendations of the Division's scientists. I certainly hope this is not a precedent we will see again from this commission. The stature empowering the Marine Fisheries Commission to direct issuance of gill net bans in certain areas does not authorize the Secretary or the Department discretion to overturn such directive. So the only way at this point in time to overturn it would involve the judiciary, which means only we'd have to file suit and go through the courts." This is why this is an eye-opener to all of us here in Dare County. Because like I said, if they're willing to do this against the science and put out a proclamation, which they have full authority to do, they can shut down a fishery. And on preliminary research that I've done, just the fisheries for the rockfish and the gill nets that are in these two rivers constitutes over $1 million of income to the state of North Carolina in taxes. Not to mention the hard reality of the men and women who fish those rivers through commercial means to put food on their table, clothes on their backs, and roofs over their heads. So that's why we need to bake due diligence in making sure that, that we stay on top of whatever the commission is doing. On March the 20th, which is this Wednesday at 6:30, I am proud to announce the Dare County Commission for Working Watermen will hold its first meeting.
All right.
At the Rhode Anthony Way Salvo Community Center. And we will be addressing this issue, along with also the, the allocations for the Blue Funtuna, which has also been cut short for the northern, northern waters, I mean, the southern waters, and a few other things, other concerns that we have going on this time. So pretty much when we meet, we're gonna have our feet running, and we're gonna go full steam ahead. And I was gonna use the segue to get into our pet of the week. Unfortunately, we don't have a pet of the week. So I'm, I'm gonna leave you with, actually, I've got two tributes for tonight. Number one, St. Patrick's Day, everybody knows about St. Patrick. Did you also know that on the same day?
St. Gertrude.
There is St. Gertrude.
Yes, I did.
And St. Gertrude is the patron saint of cats. So if you have a cat at home, wish him a St. Gertrude Day. And on my last, which is our American history trivia, on this day in 1865, a few years ago, I wasn't around. Bob, you might've been there, I don't know.
I remember, I remember it well.
This day in 1865 was the very last day the Confederate Congress adjourned for the final time. And with that, I yield the floor.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner House. Commissioner Couch, all down there by yourself tonight.
Don't let me, don't let me go after you. Thank you, Steve. Just, I know we have another meeting coming up before the official state dedication of the bridge, but really looking forward to, to the Mark Bass Night Bridge for the coming together. Really looking forward to it, and hopefully the weather cooperate. Very active real estate market, not just in Hatters, I mean, it's really busy. A lot of people looking, a lot of paperwork being written, but also on this end of the beach as well, so that'll bode well, if it'll sustain itself, if this level of activity sustains itself, it's gonna be quite a year, but we'll have to see.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Seeing, seeing weekends picking up?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of homeowners down, getting their houses ready, and we finally got a break in the weather here, but, and we say this every year, it's almost as if somebody switches, flips the switch, and you go from nobody to everybody.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
A lot of traffic on the road, so, you know, there's no transitional element, it's just boom, they're here.
I'm ready.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we all got livings to make. Enjoying crossing the new bridge, I, I cross it frequently. No reason to grumble about being held up for two to three minutes, 'cause the views are really outstanding, and, not if you got a bridge phobia, but it's just a lot to see. You can see a wave, you can see two shipping lanes from the top of the bridge, the first one out there and then the second one as well. And so, I've got a good pair of binoculars, looking forward to the stops on the bridge, until they don't stop us anymore, yeah.
Do you have a, do you have a preference, you've been over it enough, do you have a preference yet as to which is the nicest view, going south or north?
Going south, most definitely.
That's what I'm thinking.
When you come down that rise and you, yeah, it's, it really highlights the fact that, number one, of the natural beauty and how much water it really is, but at that height, as we get closer, as the water begins to get up in the 70s, it's gonna be a stunning, stunning blue.
Yeah. It's unbelievable how much beach you can see going south.
Yep.
It's unreal. Thank you, Commissioner Couch. I've just got two items under Commissioner Business, and one is Solid Waste Management Authority. At the, you know, we need a, an alternate representative on that board, and at the Naxhead Board of Commissioners meeting on March the 6th, the board unanimously voted to support Kitty Hart Councilman Tina Teich to serve as alternate representative on the Albemarle Regional Solid Waste Management Authority. And at this time, I'd like to put forth that name for y'all to approve, if, if so, if you so choose to do so.
I'd move to approve Tina.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. The second item I have this evening, Commissioner, I mean, Vice Chairman Overman was gonna present this, but as I mentioned earlier, he's out on, out of town on some airport authority business. We have done this about seven, our four prior boards have done this, about seven, issued about seven resolutions in the past to support jetties to permanently stabilize Oregon inlet. These resolutions were made certainly primarily in the interest of safety and all who use the inlet for the economic consideration of Oregon inlet, provides all that economic stability for county and state. Now, as a result of certainly flooding issues that we have in recent years, the inlet is also an outlet, and that role serves to provide a means to drain our contiguous estuaries, thereby maintaining good water quality and proper water levels within these estuaries and their feeder rivers and streams. This in turn protects certainly the valuable farmlands to our west from flooding, further creating crop losses and economic effects in all of Dare County and the farmers. Closer to home, good quality water is in our soils, and it's an absolute necessity for proper shellfish and finfish reproduction, which ultimately supports the livelihoods of our working watermen, as well as the interest of all of us who use the inlet recreationally as well. These are huge economic engines for our county, make no bones about it. We've talked about it many, many years, and that's why we're trying to get this dredge built, to open that thing up even more. An unstable Oregon inlet is, is a detriment to our county and our state, and it, and to allow it to continue is certainly unstable condition, is not acceptable. It's just purely not acceptable. We've gone way too long and wasted too many years. It's time to construct a dual jetty system at Oregon inlet and provide the stabilization that it requires. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman has prepared a resolution. As I mentioned, we've done seven of these in the past, he's provided a, a new resolution. And I'd like, do you have a copy of it?
I do.
County Manager, would, and would you read that resolution for the board's consideration this evening?
This is a resolution.
This is a resolution supporting terminal groins and jetties, whereas the state of North Carolina has 320 miles of coastline and 19 minutes that are both public, a trust, and a significant economic resource. And whereas the coastal erosion of the oceanfront shoreline is one of the most serious challenges facing North Carolina's coastal communities, which jeopardizes public safety and puts at risk millions of dollars of public and private infrastructure, thereby threatening the tax base that is a lifeblood of coastal local governments and represents a significant part of the state's economy. And whereas Oregon inlet in Dare County on the outer banks of North Carolina serves as a vital outlet to the Atlantic Ocean and functions as a channel for the drainage of storm waters from the vast Alamo Marlo Pameco estuary system, thereby facilitating the maintenance of water quality throughout that system and reducing the impact of soundside flooding on people, property, and infrastructure. And whereas it's uncontroverted that Oregon inlet at the end of a barrier island is rapidly narrowing from, from the north, and whereas any condition which impedes the outflow of water jeopardizes lives and threatens property and public infrastructure, particularly during severe storms, by causing flood level waters on soundside properties, which increases the potential of opening one or more new and unwanted channels. And whereas rapidly narrowing and unstable inlets represent a major risk to public safety by creating navigational hazards that jeopardize lives and livelihoods for North Carolina's commercial fishermen, charter boat captains, recreational anglers, and all others who use the inlet. And whereas the problem of erosion at the end of barrier islands is unique to those areas and continues to pose a genuine threat to public beach access, public and private property, businesses and infrastructure, creating the risk of significant reconstruction costs and loss of tax revenue. And whereas a study conducted by the North Carolina Coastal Resources Commission determined that terminal groins in combination with beach nourishment can be effective at controlling erosion at the end of barrier islands and offered a slate of recommendations for environmental and ecological safeguards that emphasize the responsible use of terminal groins as a tool to control erosion at the end of barrier islands. And whereas the state of North Carolina has in the past constructed terminal groins as an inlet management tool while ensuring proper consideration of environmental issues. And whereas millions of dollars are spent each year on dredge operations to keep the inlet navigable, which would be significantly reduced with a jetted and stabilized inlet. And whereas the United States Congress in 1970 expressed the intent of that body through a specific legislative authorization that Oregon inlet be stabilized with a dual jetty system. Whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners has long advocated for inlet stabilization through terminal groins and jetties, having adopted a series of seven resolutions over the span of decades urging state and federal officials to allow these structures as a way of safeguarding public safety and protecting North Carolina's vital coastal infrastructure. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners continues to support protecting the shorelines of North Carolina with terminal groin and jetty projects by variance or by rulemaking, and asks our state and federal representatives to support the construction of terminal groin and jetty projects along the entire coast of North Carolina. Be it further resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners call on our legislative delegation in Raleigh and Washington DC as a matter of public safety and economic necessity to work collaboratively to introduce legislation that will provide for the long-term stabilizations that is so desperately needed at Oregon inlet, including but not limited to the transfer of property from the National Park Service required to anchor the jetty systems.
Thank you, Bobby. On behalf of Vice Chairman Overman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross, and the floor is certainly open for discussion.
I, I do have some things to say about it. The only problem that I have with it is the use of terminal groins, because terminal groins and jetties are completely two different animals. A terminal groin is only a land-based structure that's designed to keep the land in place. A terminal groin on the south side has worked okay, but if you look at it carefully, the sand has built up around it and is spilling over to the south. On the north side, a terminal groin would do absolutely nothing. It needs to, I would recommend striking the terminal groin references and going strictly with the jetties.
Okay, that's certainly a fair recommendation. Anyone else have any?
I would only comment that it's broadly defined now. It's not saying you're gonna build a jetty on the, or a terminal groin on the north. It's simply inclusive without specifying the actual structure or solution. So, it's kind of general in nature rather than specific. And again, I'm looking at our county attorney. Typically in these sorts of things, one would lean, well, I would lean more toward the, give us wider latitude, and we can choose to put a jetty only on the northern end, as you suggest, which I suspect is actually correct. It doesn't restrict us in any way, is what I guess I'm saying, leaving the language as it is. It says we protect shorelines with terminal groin and jetty projects by variance or rulemaking and call on representatives of state and federal government to support construction of groins and jetties along the coast. So, it's rather general as far as what any specific project might be. It gives you latitude for both. That was my only thought on it.
The only comment I'd have is that the legislation that is there now that's referred to is for terminal groins, and so if you're contemplating doing something beyond a terminal groin, which I believe is what a jetty and a sand bypass system that we've talked about in the past is, then we're really not trying to get it in under the current legislation. We would be trying to get something else beyond that. If we're truly asking for a terminal groin, which is what the legislation provides, then it's something less than what in the past we have asked for.
Any other thoughts?
I've just got one question, Jim, you might be able to answer this too. Whereas the United States Congress in 1970 expressed the intent of that body through specific legislation authorizing it Oregon inlet be stabilized with a dual jetty system, was that in the 1970 Act or was that the 73 Act?
70.
The 70?
I'm pretty sure it was the 70 Act.
Without being able to research it out, that's what I remember.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify.
That's a Harry Schiffman question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I am a coastal science junkie, as is everybody up here. We are respected and depended on the North Carolina Beach and Inlet Waterway Association. And I think this is something that I would be interested in hearing what the science will, will weigh in on this. Science can change. I think the timing is good for putting this resolution through, because I do think we have friends, but at the same ti, and I support it. But at the same time, I am interested in what the coastal science professionals have to say.
That's a good point.
I don't think it's gonna be anything that'd be detrimental. I think our timing is good across the board. I think it's something we can come together on.
Anyone else then? Well, then, there's a motion on the floor to accept the resolution as written. There hadn't been any amendment to that, so. You get, you looking at me to ask a question?
With the message?
No, I said, I said, there's a motion on the floor as written.
As presented.
As presented. Any further discussion then with that?
Yeah, I feel strongly about it. Yeah, I would like to discuss this some more.
Yeah, absolutely.
We need to ask specifically what we want, and
Right.
the, the law that Bobby's talking about is for four groins in the state of North Carolina. These are not, these are not groins meant to stabilize certainly Oregon inlet with 1.2 to 2 million cubic yards of sand moving across it in a year. It needs a jetty. And I know, I know it's asking generally, but I think if we're asking for Oregon inlet, we need to be specific of what we're asking for. And if we, you know, if you're going to the state, and of course, you'd have to go to the federal government, of course, you're not gonna go there and say, well, you know, maybe we could put a groin out there, or. It has been permitted one time for a jetty.
Well, let me just say this. We can, we can table this and get the language right.
I'm not opposed to what Jim's saying. I was, my comments were to keep it as flexible as we might need.
Right, right, I understand.
But I'm listening to arguments, and I'm looking at our county attorney as well.
Well, again, in the past, we have worked towards a jetty with a sand bypass system. The meetings we had in Raleigh were with regard to a jetty and a sand bypass. Everything, all the work that we've done in my tenure
Yeah.
has been with regard to a jetty with a sand bypass system included in it to keep the sand going south, but keep the inlet open. We haven't ever, I don't think, talked about doing a, what has it's defined, a terminal groin at our inlet, because that's not what we've asked for. And so, I guess my point is, is if we're, if we're trying to be consistent with the other requests that we've made, then we should do it in line with the jetty and sand bypass system that we've advocated for in the past.
Commissioner Ross?
I just had a clarifying question about that 1970 legislation. This specifically states that it was approved for a dual jetty system, not a terminal groin.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, I thought I heard you guys say it was a terminal groin in the 70 legislation.
No, it was a jetty.
What was built was, what we have there on the south side now, I believe, would be called a groin.
A groin, yes. And the groin was put there to protect where the bridge comes back in
The infrastructure.
the P Island, because they were getting severe erosion, and that's what groins are designed for. They're designed specifically to protect existing landmasses. So, jetties are anything that extend out for any distance into the ocean. So, I mean, it truly is a huge difference.
The permits that we got that we never did build were for a jetty, parallel jetties that went out.
But that's what this legislation authorized us to do.
Correct, correct. But there was, we had, there's a permitting process to go through, and when we finally got the permits, there was a dispute among the agencies. There's a procedure at the federal level where there's a dispute, there's a person who comes in and resolves the dispute, and when he came in to resolve the dispute, he said, no permits, and so, we didn't get permits, and so, it was never built.
Jim, are you in a position to offer an amendment to the motion?
Yes, I would like to offer an amendment, just striking basically all the terminal groin language and replacing it with jetties where appropriate.
And then the language in there about the legislation, just remove that in its entirety?
Yeah.
Yeah. You talking about the 1970?
Well, there's some, I believe there was a reference in there to legislation authorizing terminal groins or something.
No, no, it's authorizing a dual jetty.
Dual, dual jetty system.
Why do we have to strike that?
We don't.
Okay. Yeah. So, strike, strike anything with reference, Jim, as to the terminal groin, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. Jim's offered amendment to the motion. Is there a second to the amendment to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner House. Then the floor is open for further discussion.
Since Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman introduced this, should we?
Well, that was my next, I was gonna offer, we table it until we've had a chance to address it with the original maker
Seems reasonable to me.
of the resolution, if it's the pleasure of the board, but.
Yes, that seems more than fair.
Yeah.
We've got, we got, we got an amendment on the floor, if the amendment wants to
I'll withdraw my amendment until Wally gets back.
And I'll, and the maker, if the second will agree.
Oh, yes.
And I will, and I will withdraw the original motion if the second will agree.
A motion to take.
You got it, clerk?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Then, I would suggest that we'll bring this up at the next meeting after addressing these issues with the, with Vice Chairman Overman. Does that meet with y'all's pleasure?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. I believe that brings us to county managers' business.
And I just have one thing that came up last week. I got an email from the county manager over in Beaufort County. He had a concern that there's some rule changing going into effect with regard to credentialing of paramedics. Jenny and I had talked about that some time ago, but we didn't know where they were going or where they're headed, and so, when I got that, I sent it to her, and she said, yeah, it's still moving. An issue is, we have paramedics that go through a process to get credentialed as paramedics. They now want to add a two-year associate's degree included in that. We have a difficult time getting paramedics already, that'll make it more difficult. And from our perspective, Jenny, please come up here and take words out of my mouth if they're wrong. We haven't, we don't have issues with the quality of work that our paramedics do, where we have issues is getting enough people qualified as paramedics. This will make it difficult, and it won't improve the quality of care that our paramedics get any. And so, it's kind of like a solution looking for a problem.
Amen.
And so, from our perspective, what I was looking for was authority from you all to allow Jenny to publicly go out in the rulemaking world and advocate against this, as well as us with our lobbyists or whoever else politically to advocate against this as well. I don't know if there's anything you need to add to that, Jenny, but if you do, please feel free, and if you have questions, I've pretty much exhausted my knowledge of it, you will have to ask her, so.
It is a proposed, proposed rule change. There is a task force that is going out to do several public comment meetings. It hasn't been introduced into a formal rule change yet, but I think we need to get on the front side of it, and please don't think that I am against higher education, because that's further from the truth. I think that this is a process in which they are trying to drive certain agendas on the, on the backs of another issue, and I think it's strategically a mistake. I think there are ways to come in for post-education once you get into a career, requiring it at the entry level, I think is a critical mistake, and will force jurisdictions to make some choices on the delivery of service, and where none of the rhetoric so far is patient care centered. It's more about salaries of paramedics, and I think it's misplaced.
Does this, Jenny, does this impact community colleges? Our community colleges are becoming, getting more traction in the educational process. Would this hamstring the role of community colleges in providing entry-level care for?
I don't believe that it hamstrings it. I think where it hamstrings would be municipalities like ourselves, because then you're gonna be restricted of who you can look at hiring. I think the educators are the ones who benefit from this the most, because it does boost their roles into the programs. But as we all know, college education is about resources and opportunities, and not everybody is afforded those same resources and opportunities. And so, we don't want to have impacts on diversity and inclusion coming into this career field, and I think that you would have adverse impacts with that.
When you come in as a, what's the entry level, EMT, what do you call that?
EMT, yeah.
Basic. So, you come in, there's a regular progression, if you do your homework and you do what you're supposed to do, that takes you from the entry level through the paramedic level and all up, and that takes a matter of time to go through that progression. What this does is it adds to the length of time in that progression, and so, to get those paramedics from our entry level to the paramedic level is gonna take a while, especially if they're working and have to go to school part-time. And so, what now takes X number of years is gonna take X plus two, and that creates problems for us when you have a limited pool of candidates to start with. And so, again, there's nothing that we've, that I've heard about, you tell me if I'm wrong, that indicates that our training levels, our paramedics aren't doing what we expect of them from the training that they're now getting. And so, while they, you could always train more and learn more, that doesn't seem to really be the problem.
Yeah, this is not a North Carolina This is not a North Carolina issue. This is a national issue. There are two states that currently require degrees. That's Kansas and Oregon. There is no proof that it has impacted patient care, making it better, that there are better paramedics doing it, or that salaries have been changed because of it. And so I think it is putting the cart before the horse. There is a movement to raise the professionalism of EMS on par with nursing and physician assistance and things like that. And one of those things is degree requirements. But the debate is at the entry level. Is this where it needs to be placed?
I just had a quick question. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Usually when I hear a solution described as seeking a problem, it belies the fact that there's another agenda at play. To the extent you can or feel comfortable, can you share with us what that agenda is that might be behind this?
I will tell you that the position statement supporting this came out of the National Association of EMS Educators, the National EMS Management Association, and the International Association of Flight and Critical Care Paramedics. It is a push from the EMS education side to do this. It has been part of national reports for decades that this is something that needs to be moved toward and raised in the profession because, you know, over the last few decades, the utilization of emergency care has become more complex. There's no doubt about that. But the issue of requiring this by 2025, grandfathering everybody else, still is problematic and I think has significant unintended occurrences with it.
My question was just a clarification. The two-year requirement would be for incoming EMTs?
Paramedics only.
Paramedics, okay.
Yes. And, you know, there's...
So you'd be an EMT, and in order to become a paramedic, you'd have to have...
In order to be certified as a paramedic in the state of North Carolina, you would also have to have an associate degree of any type, not necessarily in applied sciences, which tends to beg the issue. A better paramedic is not created by an educated paramedic. If the issue is about the ability in math or the ability to write because of report writing, then, okay, let's require an English class and a math class, you know, as a prerequisite to it, but not a full degree of any type. I think it is driven by the educators who have a clear, distinct advantage of this for this.
So, you know, if we're going to have a business major... I was a business major. I can get associate business degree and meet that requirement. Has nothing to do with whether I'm a better paramedic or not. My paramedic training is going to be exactly the same. So it's kind of like, as I said, a solution looking for a problem.
The North Carolina EMS Administrators Group has not taken a position on it. I talked to the chairman of that group today, as a matter of fact, about this, and he did not have it on their agenda anytime soon to be coming up. But I think with the EMS educators in North Carolina going out seeking input for this proposed rule change, the next step in that would be for the Office of EMS to do a NORA and include that there's going to be a proposed rule change down, you know, down the road. I think we need to be prepared and start talking about the impacts, you know, requiring a degree. And I sat in a meeting where I was astonished out of some of the things that came out of the speakers' mouths, that this is the way to drive an increase of paramedic salaries that I find absolutely horrendous because this is about patient care and public safety, not an agenda to drive salaries. And requiring a degree does not drive the economic decisions that you all have to make on every day in selecting priorities for county government. I just don't think that it's positioned correctly.
Back in my time when I was with EMS and very heavily involved with the state aspect of it, this was brought up before. I think this is probably about the third or fourth time it's been brought up. And whereas before, at one time, they were saying that they had to have a paramedic's degree, two-year degree. There are a very few handful of colleges in North Carolina that even offer a two-year paramedic degree. And at that time, they were trying to eliminate it to, you know, that a paramedic should have a paramedic degree. And it was proposed that that should be the goal moving forward. Now they're realizing also that that two-year degree in paramedicine would be extremely hard, if not impossible, to do going forward with a small handful of colleges that are actually having that degree. So that's why they're expanding it out and trying to say you could have any degree, any two-year degree, and be a paramedic, or not be a paramedic. You still have to go through the paramedic class. And I agree with you and with our attorney saying, just because I've got a degree in... associate's degree in watercolor painting doesn't make me any better of a paramedic than what I've learned in the paramedic class. Also, it does hamper your current EMTs that want to become paramedics because now they've got to go through the paramedic training. And if you look at the number of hours that it requires for paramedic training, you're close to two years right then and there. And now you've got to take that training, plus then you've got to take another two-year courses to get an associate's degree. So if you're looking at the basic EMT who's just starting out and gets caught in that 2025 cycle, they're actually going to be spending close to four years in school to get an associate's degree with a paramedic certification.
Luckily, the community colleges here, they will articulate a lot of the credit for certifications, which does trim that time down. But there is still a significant investment in time and cost books that that needs to create, and we don't have an avenue to help offset those costs for that.
Exactly, exactly. And also another thing I was looking at, too, which was brought up in the past when this was brought up before, was that a lot of your employees in EMS, not just Derek County, but across the state, it was a way of, number one, helping people because everybody wants to help it. It wasn't anything having to do with that. But you could take a lower-income family and wanting to better themselves and trying to get a good job where they were helping people, and they couldn't afford to go to nursing school, they could afford to go to EMT school and get their EMT. And then, then once they get a job with the basic EMT, then they can move up the ranks to get to their paramedic level. And so that was a segue from your lower-income family to actually have a good-paying, substantial job at the end. And moving this into a two-year degree program, that kind of eliminates those people. And you're going to lose a great deal of good paramedics out there or potential paramedics in the future by doing a step like this. And those are some of the main reasons why it was killed before. But like you said, this is in the very beginning parts of, let's talk and see what we can come up with. And I fully agree, and I will support you 110%, and I will go to the meetings with you to advocate against it.
So do we need a motion on this?
I do.
Is that what we're looking for, is a motion?
That's what I... I didn't want to be out in front of you all and somebody come back and say, "What are y'all doing?" So, yes, I need authorization to move forward at whatever level through Jenny and through me and through our lobbyists and whoever in opposition to this move.
I will make that motion.
All right. I'll second it. Okay. Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, second by Commissioner Tobin. Further discussion?
It is problematic, and it does impact us. I mean, if we don't advocate for ourselves on this and our special needs in this area, I mean, it can create further problems with housing. It can... we're isolated. This might work better in the triad and the triangle and everything, but some of your rural counties is just full of trouble.
Anyone else? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Opposees like sign? Motion carries on. Mr. Jenny? Jenny, while you're here, Dare of MedFlight Open House.
Yes.
Sunday, Saturday, March 30th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
That is the open house. I would like to extend an invitation. If, starting about 8:15, we will have a remembrance ceremony for the department. This year is the 30th anniversary of our tragic loss of MedFlight, where we lost a pilot and a paramedic coming back from a call. I have invited the families, the DeValle family and the Willoughby family, to the event. I know the DeValle family is planning to attend. So if you would like to attend, you're more than welcome. We do that remembrance ceremony. We bless MedFlight with one of our chaplains, you know, performing that piece of it. It will be earlier, and then the public doors open up at 9:00. So please come out and join us.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Jenny, if you would, too. I think you have something else going on in Derek County that's going to bring other people to the area.
In May, the 20th through the 22nd, at Jeanette's Pier, we are in conjunction with COA hosting a three-day educational event. It's EMS at the OBX. I think we're almost full. We advertised that statewide, and I know it also got up into Virginia some. And we are really happy that so many people want to come. And so we have three days planned of educational events for continuing education for EMTs through paramedics. Would love to see if you all would want to come and open it up for us and are very happy with all the support that we've gotten. So we're excited and looking forward to that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Dorothy, Public Information Officer, you got anything for us this evening?
I would just make note that the county has kicked off the update of our hazard mitigation plan. That's something that's required by FEMA to be eligible for disaster relief funds. So there's a public survey that folks can access. We're doing this in conjunction with the six towns, so it's for everyone in the county. You can access it on the website or directly at obx-hmp.com. It's a survey about our hazards and how to address those. It takes less than five minutes. The more people we can get to take a few minutes and discuss it, the better our plan will be. So just a reminder about that.
Great, thank you. David Clausen, Finance Director, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. That brings us to adjournment until 9:00 a.m. on April 1st. Believe it or not, we're going to meet on April Fool's Day. How appropriate.
No reference to anyone on the desk.
Yes.
No reference to anyone on the desk.
So a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposees like sign?